Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the very first council meeting of 2021. Happy New Years to everybody. I hope everybody had a relaxing holiday. Even though you weren't in Hawaii, the weather feels like Hawaii these past few days. So, I hope you have a good year. I'd like to call the meeting to order with the adoption of the DANSO. The first item I would like to move the mayor's report eight one to in camera eighteen point three. Is there any other?
The administration has no issues. The library budget go to correspondence perfection. So we better do this. Okay, yes. This is for twenty twenty one.
All right, could I have somebody move the adoption of the American program, please? Council for us, all in favor, carry. I'd like to call upon Corporal Mills to give the RCMP E T Taps moving forward. Good evening, council.
Everybody got the report that I drafted and for the trust?
Yes.
Third for the prisoner council. From December, we lodged nine prisoners in our cells. Your overlap, ten number dropped to ninety nine from last year. Our total numbers for twenty twenty run as thirteen hundred and twenty eight prisoners. And previous year were twenty one hundred and fifteen, so quite significant increase for our numbers year over year. In the month of December, we had a hundred and ninety one calls for service within the town of High Level. Previous year was a hundred and eighty four. Now, probably years total to three thousand one hundred and twelve calls at the town of High Level. We see three thousand six hundred and eighty seven for the previous year, so likely down. And in the month of December, there are nine reports of assaults. One report of an aggravated assault, charges related in six of these files. One of them was deemed to be unfounded. And then two that there's insufficient evidence for us to proceed with. And one was resolved by way of the complaint seeking their action being taken. There were three broken enters reported. One of those remains under investigation while the other two were deemed as unfounded. There were three impaired driving complaints. December also saw the start of the provincial sanction program, which basically takes criminal aspect sort of away from impaired driving and moved it more to provincial sanction. Criminal charges can still be pursued in certain circumstances where things are more aggravated. Before the person has displayed track record of impaired driving. So there were six suspensions issued under the new provisions. There were fourteen liquor act incidences. Charges related in two of those instances and the others saw these with officer discretion. Subjects were lodged and held until such time that they were able to care for themselves. There were forty calls related to mischief to property or the destruction of the enjoyment of property. And all of those were clear using discretion. A little bit of an increase over some previous months with seven mental health calls. Three were unfounded and four of them resulted in people being dealt with through the hospital. Four reports of missing people, one of which is still open and under investigation. Two sexual assault files, charges have been laid on one and the others still also under investigation. Eight calls for nine one ones and all were deemed to have been unfounded. Three reports of stolen vehicles, two were unfounded and one complaint requested no action taken. Two reports of threats, one was deemed unfounded, the other didn't have sufficient evidence. And then there were thirteen allegations of failures to comply with judicial orders, resulting in nine charges. And four were dealt with by way of discretion. The other account file, obviously, that doesn't total up, would be included as its other agency collisions and general. The second page is just the month. It's an analysis of the month of December year over year. You just have to get a progress from certain areas, which kind of snapshot of what the month of December looks like here. Anybody have any?
Any questions? I don't have a question about this report, but I have a question to the council.
Okay.
I'm wondering what we can do about cyber bullying.
Specifically like through schools?
Yeah, students that are at school.
I know in the past, there's been some presentations coming through the high school and I believe at the middle school that an education staff with some of those kids have been kind of stopping before it starts, which obviously is kind of preferred course of action and just having to get involved further down the end of it. But yeah, us being more engaged in the school or having that opportunity, because kind of it's challenging now because nobody's allowed in this school. But that's probably our best way. If there are things that are happening, it needs to be reported past the law. People don't come to us and tell us that things are happening, we don't know about it.
This girl's life is actually being threatened. Like that was pretty to the emails are the threats today.
Yeah, then she needs to come in and talk to us and report it so that we can action it moving forward.
Thank you. All right. Is Tormaine on Zoom?
I'm not sure. All this thing, delegation lines? We have a virtual presentation of the campaign. Also, there's a version of.
Hi there. We are Tormaine and Janelle Vance like. We're the owners of Move Up Magazine and Vault Media. And we've been partnering with the town of High Level for the past six years. We'd like to start by telling you a bit about ourselves and our companies. Then we'd like to tell you more specifically about the Go Mighty Peace partnership to which the town of High Level and eight other municipalities belong. We're happy to answer any questions you may have at the end.
We'd like to tell you a bit about our background. Tormaine grew up on an acreage just outside of Dixonville. And I grew up in Meander River in High Level before moving to Peace River and eventually Dixonville, which is where we met and started dating in junior high school. After high school, we both spent a few years working in the oil industry, the trades and customer service. We decided to enroll in university after spending a year upgrading our high school. We moved to Victoria B C to start university in two thousand and seven.
We both graduated with bachelor's degrees in media and communications, both with distinction. With our degrees in hand, we moved back to Peace River on an N A D C bursary and promised to work for a minimum of one year in our chosen field. That was in two thousand and eleven. We did what many Northern Albertans do, we started our own company. During a fun but tumultuous first couple of years, we established a brand for publishing and graphic design called Vault Media. And in two thousand and thirteen, we launched Move Up, Northwestern Alberta's business and lifestyle magazine. We started it as a two issues per year pilot project with just a handful of municipal stakeholders.
From the beginning, Move Up Magazine was built on municipal and nonprofit partnerships. It's a publication designed to promote our people and our communities, bolster awareness of what we have to offer, showcase opportunities and create a heightened sense of civic pride. It started with five partnering municipalities, followed by a partnership with Money Peace Tourism. By two thousand and fifteen, we grew to partner with nine municipalities, including the town of High Level.
This growth in municipal and provincial buy-in allowed Move Up to go from the two magazine per year pilot project to the well-established quarterly magazine we all know and love today. The partnership was named Go Mighty Peace. And for three years, Travel Alberta matched all funds that municipalities pooled together. The marketing campaign took the better part of the year to plan and it rolled out in early two thousand and fifteen. The Go Mighty Peace advertising, which is the yellow color coded section in Move Up, has become a treasure directory of regional events, resources and things to do. The most comprehensive and inclusive of its kind.
In addition to advertising space, partner municipalities receive both editorial coverage and direct mail distribution. Quite simply, if you're a Go Mighty Peace partner, we write stories and hire photographers to promote your people and your businesses. Since the beginning, partner municipalities have been the town of High Level, County of Northern Lakes, Clear Hills County, M D of Peace, Town of Grimshaw, Town of Peace River, Northern Sunrise County, M D of Fairview and the Town of Fairview. Mighty Peace Tourism and Travel Alberta helped create this partnership and were also partners in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen.
These were very important years for Move Up. Not only did we start publishing four times per year, we also expanded our distribution and begun mailing to entire towns directly to everyone who accepts flyer mail. Though it was an increased expense, it's been much more efficient way to put Move Up in the homes and businesses of Northwestern Albertans. Recognition of Move Up increased dramatically. With an ironclad distribution strategy in place, we were able to focus more on content featuring more local people and businesses from all over the vast region we serve.
However, in early twenty eighteen, Travel Alberta withdrew from the partnership as their policy is to only fund projects like these for three years. To make up for the loss of funding, we approached each municipality about doubling their financial commitment. But not surprisingly, they could not accommodate the increase.
At Move Up, we had a choice to make. Dissolve the partnership or get creative and make it work. We chose the latter. We knew our mail distribution strategy was important, so we negotiated a deal with each municipality to cover as much of the extra printing and mailing costs as possible.
In two thousand and eighteen, we began a partnership with Ready. In two thousand and nineteen, we began a partnership with M F T A. And in two thousand and twenty, we began a partnership with Mackenzie County. Although they're not Go Mighty Peace members, these partnerships have allowed us to create content for and distribute to Mackenzie County, and High Level's coverage has increased as a result. Today, we print a total of sixteen thousand copies per issue, four times per year. Of those copies, we mail approximately fifty one hundred to the following eleven towns and settlements. High Level, Paddle Prairie, Meander River, Fort Vermillion, Ox Lake, La Crete, John Door Prairie, Buffalo Head Prairie, Zama City, Rainbow Lake and Garden River.
By and large, our business model is to seek investment from local municipalities and nonprofits and businesses in the form of advertising. We then reinvest that money by directly serving each community and its people with local stories, photography and mail distribution of the magazine. Essentially, we seek to partner so we can grow and serve. We have been grateful for these partnerships and we will continue to collaborate and get creative when necessary in order to keep focus on our bigger picture. Connecting and promoting the region economically, socially and culturally. That's Move Up in a nutshell.
We watched the High Level council meeting in late November when the decision was made by the partners and tourism hotels to no longer invest their marketing dollars in Move Up Magazine. As you know, this is where funding for Go Mighty Peace was sourced. Taking the last year into account, we understand and respect the decision to pivot. It's something we've had to do many times. However, while it was perhaps a necessary move for them, we hope the town of High Level doesn't feel the same. We would like to continue doing what we do for the town of High Level businesses and residents. Creating written and photographic content from scratch, packaging it into an enticing medium and having it printed and mailed to the public for free.
We believe in the value we provide and we offer it to municipalities for little more than cost. Because this buy-in gives us the foundation we need to provide a baseline of distribution and coverage. Move Up Magazine works because it's backed by municipalities that are united to promote Northwestern Alberta. It's a partnership that geographically accounts for nearly a quarter of the province. It's a perfect example of when the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. We want to avoid having a geographical hole in Move Up's distribution and coverage. It would be the first time and we feel it would weaken the cause.
Our next magazine comes out in February. We hope council will decide to continue its annual commitment of ninety three hundred dollars. It's an investment that pays dividends. It includes Go Mighty Peace Partner advertising, approximately fifty eight hundred magazines per year, which are printed and mailed exclusively for town of High Level residents and businesses. We work hard to ensure there is interesting and relevant editorial coverage for your readers and inclusion of High Level residents and businesses. We solicit community events and programming from town staff to advertise in the Go Mighty Peace section. And we do countless hours of our own research to fill in the gaps. As a member and therefore part of our service area, we request press releases and story suggestions from town staff for features, news and other content. Plus, this price also includes an additional half page advertisement, which is a token of our appreciation for covering Canada Post mailing expenses.
We'd really like to continue partnering. We're seeking dollars in exchange for advertising, distribution and coverage. But ultimately, we're asking for the minimal funding needed to continue working to achieve each other's mutual goals of connecting and promoting the region. We hope council will see the extended value we offer and find a new way to budget for it. Since our next issue comes out in February, we realize there's not a lot of time left to make a decision. So, as a gesture of good faith and as a token of our appreciation for six years of business, we've decided to include limited coverage and pay for copies to be mailed to High Level residents and businesses for the February issue, regardless of whether we receive compensation. Unfortunately, without an investment, we simply cannot afford the many hours and costs associated with creating high level content, printing extra magazines and mailing to your residents. We understand this is a choice that you have to make and will respect your decision either way. Thank you very much for your time. We're available now to patch in via Zoom to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions, council? No? All right. Can I ask why Sean Lee is the presenter of this? In pursuit of the library act? Under the council's delegation request form? No, it says Vault Magazine, Move Up Magazine. All right. Approval of the December minutes?
Moving to December seventeenth minutes?
M P Mayor moves to December minutes, all in favor, carry. Moving of the December fourteenth special council meeting minutes? Counselor Morgan, all in favor, carry. Staff, Corporal Mills' presentation on the statistics for December. Do you have someone move that report? Counselor Anderson, all in favor, carry. Any discussion on the Vault Move Up Magazine presentation? Yes?
I know when we made, I guess, the decisions to cancel our subscriptions, I'm wondering if we assessed each one individually or did we just feel that print media in general was not the way we want to do it?
Well, I think I tried to make an argument for Move Up Magazine. And I tried to impress going counsel how we were one of the founding partners of it. And we have advertised a lot of our businesses in that magazine and they've done a great job. It's all free to every resident, every household.
I, I even just think personally, when I was looking at, you know, the rationale for print media, I kind of agree that, you know, maybe we have to look elsewhere. But maybe it takes a presentation such as this to reevaluate, maybe a particular periodical. I don't know how the rest of council feels, but after hearing the presentation and looking like, you know, we may be the only hole in that entire effort, maybe we could look at that Move Up Magazine specifically as opposed to just print media in general.
How many of you have ever seen Move Up Magazine? So it's been in your mailboxes, it's advertised the entire region. It's written stories about businesses in our region. And yeah, like if, if we don't, if we don't put that money in, we're not going to get it anymore. So yeah, we're going to be the hole in this entire region from the north, so Peace River, no one. Yes?
Ready still maintains its advertising membership.
Yes, but they won't particularly advertise businesses in High Level. They will be advertising businesses in the ready region, but.
I think ads in general are on a per business basis. They write articles about businesses in the region. Ready gas, getting the number of High Level businesses over the years.
Yeah.
So we still have reserves there, just not the distribution to our residents.
Yes. So we will have a slight presence in there. We just won't have here exactly right, there'll be no distribution to the residents this year. Anyways. What?
Just. I'm just interested in looking at it again, but if it's, if it's not in interest of council, I'm also okay just move on.
Well, it's an interest of minds we can bring into a motion.
Okay, well, I would, I would make a motion to, we're already entertaining a motion at this time, remember?
Yes.
If.
We can bring it to a cow meeting and look at how it's, how it has benefited our region.
Yeah, I think maybe I'd like to make a motion to relook at Move Up Magazine specifically and maybe evaluate a little bit more in detail its benefit to our, to our municipality.
So the next cow meeting, because he saved everybody's time, huh?
Yeah.
Do you have time on the cow meeting?
Oh, yeah, plus I can make a decision at the last meeting in January.
All in favor? Carry. Okay, so the next item is. Deputy Mayor?
December eighth, I attended the, of course, public advisory meeting. On December the ninth, I attended Ready. We had first the annual general meeting, followed by a board meeting. On December tenth, I attended the last session of the municipal affairs, public engagement training session. And then later that evening did the R S S A negotiating committee meeting with the county. On the fourteenth, attended the special council meeting. And on the seventeenth, was honored to be included as a judge in the Christmas lights judging. Great displays by all entrance and driving around the town. Took, took two and a half hours, I think, to judge the twenty eight entrants and getting a chance to see the public spirit in the community. There was probably at least twice as many houses decorated that did not enter that contest. And just a spectacular display issue, I was really, really impressed. So congratulations to all the participants.
And non-partis- and non-partists, yeah, everyone did decorate, it was fantastic. Yeah, I thought this was really good this year. Counselor Anderson?
All I have to do go through is the December fourteenth special council meeting.
Counselor Forrest?
Same thing, December fourteenth special council.
Counselor Jessman?
On December the ninth, I attended the High Level B C Society meeting as well as the High Level Air Force presentation. On the fourteenth of December, the special council meeting. And on the seventeenth, as well as judging the High Levels Christmas lights house, on the houses. So that was actually a lot fun, like Counselor Lloyd and I had enjoyed that a little bit. I could do it again, but it was cool to see the efforts of everybody and the desire to get involved in these huge events, so.
How many of you participated in the ringing of the bells Christmas Eve? You could hear them ringing all over, like it was really neat. At least I could hear them all over in my neighborhood. Counselor Morgan?
I attended the R S S A negotiations with the county and the special council meeting, and that is all.
Yep, Counselor Elke?
On December eighth, I attended a virtual meeting with SETI and the Deneta for the friendship accord that's being drafted between the Deneta and the town of High Level. There'll be some updates on that probably shortly. Chamber meeting, Chamber of Commerce meeting on December ninth, virtual meeting. We discussed kind of the A two A initiative and the business directory specific to that initiative. There's been a little loss of momentum there, I think, because everything's been pushed back a bit, COVID. But I believe there's another meeting this week, so we should find out more on time where we're going with that. And then I also attended the special council meeting on December fourteenth as well.
Thank you, counselors. Could I have someone move council reports? Counselor Jessman, all in favor, carry. Actions resulting from council committees, any questions about the actions? If not, could I have a motion, please?
Move to information.
Counselor Forrest moves for information, all in favor, carry. Our capital project status sheet? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
Pipeline to water line to Bushy, is that operational?
Mayor, the both lines, the Bushy River water line as well as the ninety second street connector are pretty well completed, returning both of them on tomorrow. So as of tomorrow, the water will be on to both lines up to the meter house as well as servicing the customers that want to connect in, like Christians and a couple of churches. So those lines are completed and we'll just kind of spring cleanup, which will be landscaping and touch up.
So can I come out and turn the water on?
Did you wish?
Yes.
Well, at least in my question, where do we go to have like, was there going to be a saw turning event for that or?
Well, the chief and I were going to go out there and turn the saw, but then COVID hit and they were kind of locked down and.
We'll find a grand opening, maybe on Saturday.
Yes.
Mayor, could I suggest that we do a opening when they connect to the meter station? And that we do a short term on at that point to join all the projects. and that hopefully will be starting in twenty twenty-one. You should hear from the SETI what their plans are for the further connection point, but that would be a great ceremony to cover both.
SETI or?
It's through the SETI program.
Oh, okay. And you said the end of twenty twenty-one, like next year?
And they may need to mention that soon.
Hmm. That would be good.
That would be very good.
Okay, any other questions about capital process? Did that answer your question? You'll be able to get water to you? No? Okay.
We'll just get that later.
Is it frozen already? All right. Okay, Counselor Morgan moves for information. All in favor? Carry it. The financial report. Any questions? So I just have one question. When you put decrease and the amount, does it mean it increased that amount or is that that amount? Decreased by that, okay. Any other questions? Could I have someone move? Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carry it. Monthly reports, books boom? Okay, thirteen point one, the High Level Transportation Society.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the president of the Transportation Society did give this course for a presentation to the council and asked perhaps only the other members to answer any questions. I'll move for the question.
Deputy Mayor moves for information. Is there any questions? No? All in favor? Carry it. The municipal library report.
Madam Mayor, the library presented its twenty, uh, twenty twenty year, or regents, sorry, versus budget. Um, and we, uh, Chair of the Board, Jessman, possession of the, or Councilwoman, to answer any questions.
That's, yes.
So on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the return on investment. Last year, you guys made ten thousand five hundred and you're anticipating two hundred, you sure? Does that mean you completed all of your reserve?
Nope. Nope, we've reinvested them, uh, but at the time, we had not figured out a strategy as to how we were going to invest them all. We had a number of different G I Cs all um, mature at the same time. And we had, in our last meeting, we discussed how we were going to reinvest them. So they've been reinvested, but they're at, rather than putting one large lump sum into one G I C, we put that large lump sum into several different G I Cs. We just didn't have a projected number for this budget.
Okay, so it'll be similar to last year's number?
It should be close.
Any other question? You're off easy. All right, can someone move the uh, library for operating budget? Counselor Forrest, all in favor? Carry it. Public, uh, member appointment for the subdivision.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, your package is a request of recommendation to appoint, uh, this really, uh, name to the subdivision development field board and the municipal subdivision development field board that actually has pastor training. Uh, if there's any questions that. Grand to answer.
Could I have a vote?
I'll move, I'll turn everyone.
Okay. Counselor Anderson? Who's the recommendation? All in favor? I have another question. How come we make hers public when we don't make the other ones public? Which are like the library board and appointments task forces. We, they go in, in, uh, in camp and go there? No, only we've done that, they've removed the resumes. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, so correspondence for information. Does someone want to move that for information?
I will move fifteen one fifteen.
Well, I just have a question here. Sorry, before we, uh, um, there was a letter in here, wasn't there? From Inta? From Vida?
Yeah, that's what we're doing too.
There is a media attach.
Okay.
We could break talk to it.
Okay. Okay. Um, all in favor of information? Carry it. So that ends our, uh, open session. Council will now move into a closed session for eighteen.